To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second. Turn your mics on.
Chairman's comments, we, the only comment they have tonight is we have to unsmack them on Zoom, so please act accordingly. Item number two, Form A, 3 Morton Street, map 54, lots 421 and 422, applicant Roma real distrust.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a Form A. We required, I'm going to bring it up for you, part of the decision of the... Here we go. Now everyone can see it. Part of the decision for the 3 Morton Street, which was, the appeal period ended on the 7th, and they, was that they had to consolidate the lots and discontinue the street. So this Form A discontinues the street, and it consolidates the street, the lot where the parking lot is, and the lot where the building, all into one lot, a total of 22,398 square feet. This complies with our requirement, it meets the Form A requirements, and I'm recommending that the board vote to approve and endorse the plan. And the applicants here, but...
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Online? I have a motion to accept the A&R plan as presented.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, you're in good shape. Item number three, continued public hearing will be held at the site plan review case file SP 25-009, petition of the applicant property owner ATS Equipment. Attention, Steve Conley, 33 Locust Street, Boston, Mass. The applicant requests a site plan review under section 10.6 to construct 23,385 square feet of industrial building for rental and sale of construction equipment with parking, landscaping, drainage, and other site improvements. The property is located at 259 275 Page Street, assesses map 94, lots 38, 39, 40, and 41 in the industrial zoning district. This has been continued from June 26.
Good evening, members of the board. Fred Keeler from Hancock Associates, project civil engineers, Stephen Conley from ATS Equipment. Since the last meeting, we've gone through the review comments, the technical review that Mr. Roth and Mr. Horstwell provided. We've submitted written responses to the comments, revised plans. We believe we've addressed the comments to ever in satisfaction, but we're here to certainly answer any other questions that might arise.
Craig, or Bill?
Mr. Chairman, they've addressed all of the comments, and I'm recommending, I have a draft recommendation for conditions of approval, which were emailed to you.
I read the draft recommendation.
And so...
Have the plans been updated with the changes that were put on?
Oh, yes.
That's been 100% done, we're all set with that, okay. Any questions on the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm just quickly looking at the drawing to determine the utilities coming in off of Page Street. Has that been determined yet?
Yes, sir. We've made contact with the various utility companies. We have some high-pressure gas, so we intend to pipe our utilities in before Page Street is reconstructed.
That's fine, thanks. You just have to get them off the road. Okay, that's...
Yes, sir. We understand, and we've taken some actions to forward that along so that we can move very quickly when we are approved.
Did you say high-pressure gas?
Yeah, ever-source would be the gas.
That's high-pressure in that area.
Right, okay.
And Bill, I thought that, I was just looking for that as a special condition. We were going to have that as part of the condition, was that they needed to get that work off of Page Street prior to, but it's not written as part of the special conditions.
I don't recall that you wanted that. I know that Craig and the engineer have been working with it, and we have a moratorium if they don't get it done, so that's why we're...
What's the moratorium?
About cutting into the street.
And how long?
Five years. Five years. So we've been, they've been coordinating with our department, with Development Services and Engineering. We're keenly aware of it, and as soon as the decision's done, that we're gonna, they're gonna look at moving forward with that.
Anybody else? Anybody from the audience have any questions? Anybody online have any questions? Can I have a motion for what we want to do with this?
To approve.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, continued public hearing will be held at the petition of the applicant property owner, Richard P. Azza of Suburban Electric Contracting, for the site plan review, SP 25-006, under section 10.6, to construct 6,995 plus or minus square foot industrial office contractor bay building with 16 parking spaces, landscaping, and stormwater drainage system. The applicant is represented by Strongpoint Engineering Solutions, LLC, West Bridgewater. The property is located at 271 Canton Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, assesses map 43, 1 industrialized zoning district.
Good evening.
You're on.
For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer, Strongpoint Engineering, representing Suburban Electric at 271 Canton Street. Excuse me, I feel like I'm echoey tonight. The last time that we were here, we had some outstanding comments with the Development Services Department that were fairly minor, so we've addressed those comments. We've, just to summarize them very briefly, along the western property line, there was a question if some existing trees toward the street were on the property or not. We've determined that they are not, and we've added a fence along that side for screening, extending all the way to the back to conceal the dumpster pad area that's behind the building. That's going to be a six-foot-tall wooden stockade fence. We corrected a few minor typos on the plan. We added a tree along the frontage for landscaping. We specified the dumpster enclosure to be split-face block to match the facade of the building, the lower facade, and we specified all of the colors and material treatments on the architectural plans for the building. Additionally, the last time we were here, we were waiting on conservation approval. They did grant that approval during this meeting, so conservation has wrapped up and has issued the order of conditions, so...
They already have issued the order?
They voted to issue. I don't actually have the order yet, but it's, the matter's closed, and the order's being drafted. So I believe we've checked all the boxes on this.
I know that the fencing issue is still an issue, that we see the fencing is not allowed under our code, or we're supposed to take a special thing on it, so, and I know Bill probably said cedar fencing, but we don't have that. It is against what we're supposed to do.
We're happy to change to something that is allowed.
I mean, and I'm open to the board for any suggestions, but that right now, unless we took a special vote on the cedar fencing, we're supposed to be changing. We get it, something, we get to talk about the code down. When we do, the code reviews come in.
The board could vote to approve it.
It could vote to approve it.
The cedar fence.
Right, that's why I'm, I'm just making that statement. Up to the board if they have any issues with it. Any other questions from the board?
Your mic. Your mic.
Microphone.
I see that there are two signs on the front of the building. Is that within our signing signage setup?
Bill, they illustrate the signs, you do not actually approve the signs. The building department will, and they would have to make sure that they...
Unless they're outside of what's required by code, then we have to approve.
So, then, if what they're, I did not do any measurements and calculations on it. If it exceeds it, then they have two options. They, because they did not apply for a sign variance, no matter what, so you're not granting a sign variance with this approval. They're putting the signs on for illustrative purposes only. They will have two options. They'll shrink the size of the sign, or they would come back for a separate sign variance.
I think that Jack just needs to understand that just because it's on these plans that we've approved, that it does not mean we've approved the total sign, so that Jack knows that. However, that's got to get related to him.
Yeah. And the applicant has addressed all of our comments, and I have drafted a recommendation of approval that was emailed to you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I think this is the property. The fence, and then there's trees that are there, is there an issue that I think I read about that?
Yes, so we, there was a question as to whether or not some of the trees along the western property line, kind of toward the road, were on this property or on the adjacent property. We were able to confirm that they are on the adjacent property. So once we add the fence, it'll be additional screening, and we won't have to touch the trees to do it.
So I'm not familiar with the, are they arborvitae?
No, those trees are full grown...
They're large deciduous trees.
There you go.
Okay, so there's no issue with the fence and having to trim up, trim up the trees?
Oh, no, they're large deciduous trees. It's not arborvitae or anything, and the, and what we discussed with him is, I said, show the offset, but, you know, when you go in the field, if you can put your fence on the property line, it's obviously, we prefer fences on the property line, because, but it's, they will, you know, that'll be a field decision on getting it on the property line, hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah, we showed it plus or minus five feet off, and noted that it's our intention that no tree should be disturbed to put the fence in, so...
You should like that. Is the north, south, east, west correct on the map?
I believe it is, yes.
Because I'm thinking, standing on Canton Street, with the building at my back, I'm looking west.
Bill, can you zoom up to where the, the north arrow is on the plan? It should just be able to pan down on the page. Pan the other way. Yeah, I believe that's correct, but I can certainly confirm.
I think that's right.
It is right. This is the way it looks on the GIS, and our GIS runs north-south.
Canton Street's almost going like northwest at that location, yeah. More westerly, actually.
All right. That's why I got lost in the woods.
Any questions from the audience that are here? Come on up.
Hold on just a second. Richard Parlin, Southern Echo Boulevard. I believe the dumpster has to be on a cement pad and 15 feet from the property line?
And the dumpster is on a cement pad, and it's well over 15 feet. It's, it's 100 feet from the property line.
Anybody else? Anybody online has any comments? What's the, what's the board at this point? We willing to accept this plan as it is?
I have no issue with the cedar fence. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's fine with me. I was just going to say, the present building has always been kept very nicely, and, you know, I'm expecting that that's going to continue, and it'll be a nice-looking property.
Certainly, absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Item number five, continued public hearing be held on the petition of applicant owner VFW Bruce Wood, LLC, 30 Ellis Road, Newton, Mass., represented by attorney Barry Crimmins, 909 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, for case file number SPP 24-003. Special permit section 7.1 for flexible residential development. The proposal is to create 20 single-family dwelling units, residential development, and approximately 28, on an approximately 28-acre parcel with related infrastructure. The property is located at 0 Eagle Rock Road, located behind 1 Eagle Rock Road, assesses map 8, lots 17, in residential area RA, RA zoning district. This has been continued since June 26.
Good evening, again for the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering.
Dmitri Baskin, the owner.
And unfortunately, attorney Crimmins is not able to be with us tonight, so I will be doing my best legal impression for you. The last time that we were here, very similar to the last case, we had some fairly minor plan improvements to make that were really just to kind of dust some i's and cross some t's. We had to add a little bit more detail to a blow-up at the entrance to specify what we were doing with grades and things like that, add a tree clearing limit to the access pathway to the berm, and that's really about it, all that was needed from a review perspective. However, when we were at the last meeting, we did hear a number of comments from our butters, some specifically that had to do with stormwater management on Phoenix Lane. So Craig and I had discussed that and tried to come up with a way that we can make improvements. In the prior plan that we presented to you at the last meeting, we had proposed to install, Bill, if you can go to sheet C3 and kind of blow up on the entrance. There you go. So that plan shows a catch basin in just a direct piped connection to the municipal stormwater system in Phoenix Lane. Since then, we've actually revised the plan, and they're the hard copy plans that you have in front of you now, to add to that a detention system. So what will happen now is that that catch basin will be piped directly to an underground storage system that will be located on this property under the pavement. It's built in with cleanouts for access to, for maintenance and things like that. That is designed with a controlled outlet structure to control the release of stormwater flow from the site to the drainage system that's in Phoenix Lane now. So what the calculations do show is that not only are we not increasing flow to the system, we're actually decreasing flow to the system from the existing condition, so is an improvement over what is happening out there currently. There you go, we got it. Okay.
I apologize, I had the wrong planner.
No, no worries. We've got a few of these kicking around now.
It did kind of go back and forth for a while.
Eric, where's going to be the overflow outlet for that particular cul-de-sac?
So that cul-de-sac system is designed to handle 100-year storm event. It's designed with no infiltration considered because of the amount of, where it's going. It's going to be going where there's ledge now. So at the very bottom of the system, we've put along the entire center line of it, a three-inch perforated pipe that will drain the system, so there won't be water sitting in there all the time. That will discharge directly to the manhole that is in the street now, and then slightly above that is a four-inch drain line that will kick in when the pond levels rise within the system a little bit to give it an additional outlet. So it does completely contain and pass the 100-year storm event without the need for a discharge, and additionally, as I mentioned, I just want to make it clear that it reduces the flow rate coming to the street from the site over what's existing now. So certainly, this small portion of the site is not contributing to the issue, not solely responsible for the issues that they're having on Phoenix, but this will not, certainly not make it worse, and will improve it actually to some degree.
The three, the three-inch pipe you got, or the four-inch pipe you got going into the existing manhole right there is just a backup, or you said it's going to drain it out anyway?
Yeah, that only, that only kicks in in the higher storm events, when that three-inch pipe isn't enough to drain the whole thing. The pond levels within the system will rise enough to trigger that as like a secondary outfall, and that ensures that the system does not get overwhelmed. That's, they're both going to the existing manhole.
They're both going to go, okay.
Yep, and what happens now, when it rains, that front portion of the site where the ledge is, all does discharge overland to Phoenix Lane and gets collected in the closed drainage system. So we're going to the same exact location, we're just actually sending less flow to that location per this design.
The peak rates that you look into control here in the system, it's not that great of a change from existing conditions to proposed, so it's very small, it's like half a CFS.
It's not significant, yeah.
It's not a lot, and considering the watershed, when we looked at the overall watershed that's going down to where this flows to, this is a very small portion of it, but we wanted to ensure that what was coming off of this site showed zero increase, so we ended up having to go with this kind of system.
Right. And the only other note that I will make as far as, you know, where we've been since the last time that we were here, again, we were, we had Concom at the same time last time. They've actually closed the meeting and issued their order of conditions, so we do have the order of conditions, so Concom is satisfied as well.
Anything else, Craig, that you need to point out?
No, we didn't have anything else to discuss. It was just this little kind of hang-up here, we were trying to see what we could do to balance out the flows coming off the site here, and I think he came up with a good solution.
Any members of the board have any questions?
Can I just ask one question for curiosity? Runoff from the roof lines, how is that handled?
So the roof mines, the site is designed to consider that the runoff from the roof will flow overland to its ultimate discharge point. The reason it's designed that way is because we know there's a lot of surface rock out there. It's our intention, whenever we can onsite and the opportunity presents itself, to put in some sort of a dry well to handle the runoff from the rooftops, but that would be sort of in addition to what we've designed, so we designed it conservatively, considering that that can't happen, and still made the numbers work. So if we get to the field and we can make that happen, frankly, the numbers will be better.
None of these units have basements, correct?
They do not.
Okay. One question I have, I see that you have the sidewalk on the left-hand side of the road?
Yes.
Okay, which is great. The only comment question I have at that, at the very entrance, is to have, and I don't know, to be on your property, like a gravel area or cleared area, so if this buses were to pick up students, they would have a place to stand out of the way rather than right on the edge of the sidewalk.
Sure, yeah, there is, there is existing sidewalk also on Phoenix Lane and Eagle Rock, so we are tying into that, so there is a good amount of sidewalk space there, but again, that area sort of right at the front of the property is going to be very flat and will be cleared, so there will be some room even off the sidewalk for kids to congregate and stuff like that.
What I have seen in my area, the parents will drive the kids to the bus stop, they'll sit in the car. So yeah, there's nothing you can do about that.
Yeah. Kids are afraid to get wet these days, it's a shame.
I want to hail both ways in snow.
Anybody else? Would anybody from the audience like to speak on this project? Come on up.
How's it going? Don Cox from 1 Phoenix Lane, Stoughton. You know, I think we've done better with the stormwater management. One question I did have is in regards to the septic system. If anything was added to the plans to account for the generator to pump that system in the event of power loss?
We've put into the order of conditions that they must provide a generator.
And, Don, actually, after I sent you the draft conditions, I had a conversation with Craig. It's on the plans, but we actually made it special condition number two. The project shall be required to have a backup generator for the community septic system meeting the Board of Health requirements.
Okay, perfect. And then the only other thing that I was going to suggest, particularly with the, just the size of this project, is just some way, because there is a lot of concern with the residents around blasting, around the additional construction, is to kind of set some either community page, or some way to kind of communicate what's going on with construction. I think that would be very beneficial and help address a lot of the concerns that the residents have as construction continues. So just something to think about, but that's what I got.
That might be something that the builder could do.
We typically would do that. We set up like a webpage or a, it's usually kind of loosely done, as a general, either email or a, however is the most convenient way to get everybody involved.
Webpages usually work pretty well, because then people could just access them anytime they want.
Yeah. All right, and that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come up and speak? Come on up, please.
Kathleen Buckley, 1986 Bay Road. I agree with everything that Mr. Cox said, but there's also the three of us on the private way and on Jordan Drive. All these things are also going to affect us as well as turnstile and the other places. I'm concerned about, if there's blasting, I have a 33,000-gallon pool behind my house. There's things like that in my septic, I'm afraid of the septic. I'm afraid of water takes the path of least resistance, and I'm afraid of sewage coming down towards properties. There's two other people on my private way, and they've asked me to mention that they're concerned about that as well. So anyways, the project's significant impact. It'd be nice to know more about the projects that are happening and what we need to know. I mean, is there going to be blasting, isn't there going to be blasting, all the details that are going to affect us, and also the fact that, you know, and I think that Phoenix and Eagle Rock, and that includes Jordan Drive and Bay Road, because I am, my property line is like 10 feet away from Eagle Rock's line. It's really close, in the back of my house, and I'm very concerned about runoffs and stuff. I'm also concerned, I know I hear about batteries and septic tanks and all that, who's going to maintain them? And I mean, I'm sure they'll be good for a year or two, but what about five years from now? I've been in my house 39 years, and I'm really concerned about that, I really don't...
So there has to be an HOA agreement that we're going to have to review as part of the requirements?
Yeah, and I'm thinking there really should be a contingency fund. I brought that up every time I've been at a meeting to cover us, you know, for any eventuality that might occur. Because, I mean, it's really, I mean, I'm right behind them. You know, I mean, other people are too, but I mean, my property line is literally 10 feet away from them. So I'm just expressing all my concerns.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address that last comment about the septic system. Typically, with a, with a system this large, in addition to the homeowners association being responsible to maintain it, the permit with the Board of Health will require a maintenance agreement and annual inspections.
By the town?
Yeah. Or by a, a third party.
By a third party.
They'll have to submit the reports.
Okay.
Yeah. I got one other quick question.
Go ahead.
The other question I have, that kind of occurred to me, is time limit on construction noise. What are you planning on as far as your time limits from start to finish on Monday through Friday?
I believe town requirement is seven to seven, is that correct? I believe town require, whatever, we would not ask to extend anything beyond what the town bylaws allow. So if it's seven to seven or seven to six, that's what we would adhere to.
Okay, I just, some, I've seen other sites recently go on, past that.
I've seen it too, I-
Just wanted to bring it to the surface.
Anybody else out in the audience who would like to speak? So anybody online that would like to speak?
My name is Fay Seaco. I'm at 120 Eagle Rock Road. I had a quick question. Just, I had asked before, I don't know whose responsibility it is, but there, the PFAs in the groundwater are above what the EPA currently allows. I don't know whether that's going to be the responsibility of the, the homeowners there, or it should be responsibility of the developers.
I can take that one, if that, Mr. Chairman. So as far as the PFAs that may, that have potential to result from this project, we are required under the state and local statute to stormwater to provide water quality treatment, which we meet and exceed all of those requirements. Same deal when it comes to the septic system. So the, this site has been designed to not have an adverse impact on, on any ground contaminants or groundwater contaminants or things like that. If there are existing levels that are higher than they need to be, that is something that would not frankly have, we wouldn't have an impact on that one way or the other.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else online that would like to ask any questions? Okay, thank you. At this time, if the board has no other questions, we have an order of conditions in front of us.
And, Mr. Chairman, I did want to highlight that this is an unusual, you know, the flexible development. There are, as you notice, probably a lot more special conditions than I would ever want to. Just for the audience, I, I'm going to kind of paraphrase some of them, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
There is a condition that they need to meet any and all fire department requirements regarding the 10,000-gallon cistern for protection. We have the condition for a generator. It talks about all utilities, driveways, everything is private for the homeowners association. There's a condition, and this is part of the flexible development regarding the, the two affordable units. It does talk about the, the applicant is required to do a homeowners association, and they need to provide for the maintenance of roads, stormwaters, fires, cisterns, septic systems, all utilities, trash pickup, and any common areas in the development. There is a condition regarding how the, there are three options in the code for the open space requirement that they can choose from. And then it, it also talks about the ownership of the open space area for, as far as the flexible development. It does require, the conditions as written require that things such as the, the homeowners association documents need to be reviewed by town council at the applicant's expense. That includes the open space requirements, and all those deeds are all required to be submitted to the planning board and, you know, to town council for final approval. So, and that, a lot of these special conditions come directly from the code. So anything that was code-required in flexible development got folded into a special condition. So I'm just reiterating the code, so.
Quick question. We've seen different developments start, and what they do is they put down a rough course of asphalt down during construction. And then what happens towards the tail end? Money runs out or whatever, and they never get a final coat. Is there any type of bond held on this?
Well, yeah. Well, yeah, because we don't have a subdivision reg on this, right?
Yeah.
And if I- The, the bonding requirement would be occupancy permits.
Right, but, but we need to get a, the bond issue is what he's questioning.
Right.
Having a bond for the roadway and a bond for the, for the landscaping, which is a really good question.
So if I may, in a case like this, where this is not, does not fall under subdivision control, this is effectively site plan review. I don't know, and again, I'm playing amateur attorney at the moment, I don't know that the bylaw allows for a bond to be required, and I think the, the most appropriate way to ensure that it gets completed is exactly that, to hold occupancy permits ransom.
Hold on, what?
Hold occupancy permits and-
Yeah, but the, then you're, you're getting into other, other issues, because you're, you're holding occupancy permits on private people that have no, no way of getting the occupancy. You know what I'm saying? You can't do that to, to a private citizen, there's no, no idea with the construction.
It is all one law.
And I'm, I'm not going to get into legal point, but flexible development comes under the subdivision control, because without being able to prove you can do a subdivision, you wouldn't be able to do the flexible development.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So therefore, it would come under subdivision control, so I think the same requirements for bonding for the roadwork and all the landscaping should be required in this project.
Agreed.
I'd agree. If you wanted to, you could add that, approve it, subject to adding those two requirements. Those are standard conditions, and I can add them in.
Okay, what, what-
So we're going to, we're going to add in the requirement for the bonding, the same bonds are required for subdivision, will be going to be required for this project.
What, how much?
Well, that will be figured out by the engineering department. They'll figure out the amount of roadway and the asphalt, and they'll work on a calculation of what the-
Okay. Like I said, it's, projects come back four, five years later after it's been occupied, and people-
And the landscaping is strictly the landscaping along the road, not along the houses and all of that.
No, it's along the house.
And I would do the 50% standard condition. So if you wanted to approve this as condition, subject to two modifications, adding two additional special conditions. One is the bonding requirement for the, for the private driveway slash roadway and the landscaping. You could do that, and I can add that. You could vote, and then I could-
Yeah, we can do it.
And then hopefully, over the next, you know, beginning of next week, I could get all of your signatures.
Okay. Is that okay with you guys?
Not a lot with the idea.
If not, you can go back and argue with me at the next meeting with your little tribe.
That's great.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept this order of conditions with the two additional requirements as we've just discussed?
So made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I just say for a moment, too, I know this project's been in the works for a long time. We've worked a lot with staff, especially in this last run up to this point, and I just wanted to give credit where it's due, they've been great to work with, and just wanted to acknowledge that for the record.
Thank you, because we don't get that a lot.
Thank you.
Very good, hats off to you.
Thank you.
Hats off to you, Bill, thank you. Thank you, guys, gentlemen. That was a good call. That was a good call.
Thanks.
Good call.
Good question, Pete.
That's why I'm here.
If they didn't think so.
Peter.
I just assumed there'd be a bond on it. I, that, well, subdivisions have a street bond, I just assumed it had one, yeah.
Scenario. Yeah, but it is part of the subdivision control, so that's fine. All right, so item number six. A new public hearing will be held of the petition of the applicant to town of Stoughton. Development Services Department requests a site plan review under section 10.6 to renovate the town hall parking lot, create four pocket parks, provide new landscaping and other site improvements. The property is located at 10 Pearl Street. Assesses map 54, lots 217 and 221 in the Senate District, Corwin Flex Zones. You're up.
Your drawings are wrong, I don't know where.
And bring it close to you.
Bill, which, which one did town meeting approve? Was it the, the more expensive or the least?
The more expensive.
They, they approved the more expensive one.
They did go for, oh, good.
The, the version that consolidates the exit.
And I'm happy to announce that we did receive a state grant. What's for the-
Shared streets.
Shared streets. We've, a shared streets grant. So that ultimately will lower the amount that we will probably need for the, from the town meeting article.
Because that, that option was much better with the parking layout and everything, I-
Oh, consolidating, consolidating the driveways.
I agree.
Yes, we all agree.
Yeah, okay.
So, and, you know, so I'll let our consultant work on this.
Good evening, my name is Ron Hedrick, I'm a project manager with GPI. Been working with Bill and Craig and Mark on this project. I have a short presentation, I just want to go through it real quick, hit some of the highlights, and then we can go into questions and answers, and I have plans at the back of this. I don't know if I'll be able to read them from this distance, but, so, probably next slide, I guess. So, overall goals for this project, the overarching goal is really to improve the town hall environs. It, it sort of started as a landscape project and sort of has evolved based on some of the issues and opportunities we saw. Key elements of this are to provide a safe and complete pedestrian network. That includes providing barrier-free ADA-compliant pedestrian pathways. We want to meet the local zoning to the greatest extent feasible. Obviously, the, the building was built many years ago, and it's evolved over time, but we're going to bring the, the site into compliance where we can. We want to incorporate a pedestrian plaza at the corner of Porter and Pearl that replaces what's there. There's sort of a little area, but it's not very inviting, and it's, it's not really large enough. We want to relocate the memorial bell, the flagpole, and the memorial stone, and that's sort of out of necessity to accomplish what we're, we're wanting to do. We want to provide shade trees and seasonal color, and we want to provide benches and other amenities for, for visitors and, and locals. One of the key parts of this is what we're calling the town hall pocket park piece of it. It's, it's really, you know, we're improving public parking, we're enhancing the appearance of town hall, but we're providing these enhanced front yards. So we've kind of got a series of little pocket parks at different sizes, and I'm going to highlight those. The summary is that it creates spaces for pedestrians, public seating that's both ornamental and functional, varied and visually appealing landscaping, ornamental vegetation, and varied hardscape surfaces, surfaces, and lighting that complements the overall landscape. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, there's, there's kind of several key assets located around the building. There's a memorial building straight out from the, the entrance, the main entrance, along with a flagpole. It's also the accessible entrance to the building, which is key. There's a large specimen tree out front, there's actually one out back, too, that I should note, a large elm tree. And then there's the, there's really the, sort of the main pedestrian entrance at the corner of Porter and Pearl into the site, and there's a memorial stone there commemorating the, the building date of, of the building itself. Number of site issues, limited pedestrian connectivity and ADA accessibility, poor curb appeal to a certain degree, limited landscape material palette, no seating, no bike racks. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, we've got a, four different areas of pocket parks. I'm going to highlight those now. This is a picture of the, the current condition at the corner of Porter and Pearl. You can see it kind of widens out a little bit, has these granite bollards, kind of invites you in, but it's got these large shrubs that's sort of, they're overgrown, and you can barely make out kind of that memorial plaque, that, that stone plaque that's in there. Next slide. So this is what we're proposing, widening that out and opening it up. Key elements of this are, are a decorative pavement. We were thinking originally brick pavers, but as part of the shared streets and, they, they frown upon bricks, so we're probably going to go with more like a colored concrete, some kind of a decorative concrete there with maybe a stamped pattern in it.
Why do they frown upon bricks?
I think it's, a lot of times ADA issues with bricks. You know, the older bricks, a lot of times they were irregular, they had a lot of character, but irregular edges and stuff that were tripping hazards, maintenance, that kind of thing. There's a public-
I just think stamped asphalt looks awful, so.
Yeah, and I'm talking about stamped concrete. I, I tend to agree that stamped asphalt comes off as just asphalt trying, trying to be bricks.
Like to put lipstick on a pig, really.
Yeah. There's a public information sign kind of shown there on the right, that the, the town is interested in installing there. That would be a variable message sign, you know, kind of daily being, giving messages of upcoming events within the community. There is, the, the existing memorial stone commemorating the town hall, I think it would be there to the left. There would be varied seating in here, a couple like stone seating walls. There is a bit of a grade change going up into the parking lot. In, in that sort of centerpiece, you, I don't know if you can quite make it out, but the idea is that's a barrier-free point of connection up through the middle, and then on either side, it's, it's, it's one or two steps up onto kind of a plaza area with seating on either side of it. There would be lighting in here and landscaping. The second area would be at the corner of the building. This is currently what it looks like, pretty, pretty barren. And if you go to the next picture, you can kind of see, this is where we're proposing to relocate the flagpole. It would give it more visibility to the corner, to both Porter and Pearl versus where it is now. There would again be decorative pavement matching that in the plaza. There would be bike racks, seating, landscaping, and, and appropriate lighting, particularly on the flagpole. So that, and, and there's a little curved wall behind there, again, sort of a place where someone could sit and, and kind of be in the shade, look out, you know, on the street from a different vantage point, or, or wait for somebody. Next slide, please. The third, the third pocket park would be right outside the main entrance. The, this photo shows you currently what it is, there's a, there's a lack of sidewalks here. This is an area where there is existing handicap parking, and we're proposing it again, kind of right in front of the, the ramp that's there. The, the rule of thumb really is when you get out of your car, particularly if you, you have a handicap placard, is you're, you're supposed to be able to get directly onto a sidewalk, and that condition doesn't exist currently. There's also a, I think it's in your, your regulations, that there's supposed to be a separation from any building to the parking, and, and this would achieve that by adding in a sidewalk and maintaining a landscape area. Next picture there, yeah, that shows, again, some kind of a decorative pavement, seating, landscaping, and lighting. We're proposing two benches with a gap in the middle for what they call companion seating, if someone were in a wheelchair, could kind of cozy right up to the bench and be in line with the other people. And this, we see this as a great place, either for resting, for someone that has, you know, impairments and needs to frequently rest. It's also a great place to wait if you're, if you're either waiting for somebody or, you know, to arrive or waiting to be picked up. And then the fourth area, this is the existing memorial bell in the flagpole. Next picture, please. We're proposing to kind of move that a little bit towards the street, partly to accomplish what we're trying to do with the, the parking and walkways. We would, we would make that a little more prominent to the street, again, provide a little, a little niche off of the sidewalk area where people could sit and gather a couple benches, and, and make that a little bit more of that seating area, but leave it in that, that, sort of that- Again, provide a little, a little niche off of the sidewalk area where people could sit and gather a couple benches and make that a little bit more of that seating area, but leave it in that, that, sort of that similar location. That was a request that we encountered along the way. Again, decorative pavement, seating, landscaping, lighting, and, you know.
What's the proposal for the curbing that's around? Does that just put concrete or what are you looking at?
No, that would be granite to match the material that's out there. We'll detail that up more to understand it better, but we're kind of envisioning it. It'll pick up on the granite, so we'll, we'll cut out a piece of the current granite, bring it in. And we do have a grade change in there that we'll have to accommodate.
We have to get larger granite pieces.
Yeah, it might, it might have to tier up or something like that. Next slide, please. And then I, you asked the question upfront, I just wanted to highlight that, yes, we did go with the alternate where we're consolidating the exits out onto Porter Street. That really cleans it up, eliminates some of the duality there, the safety hazards. It reduces the slope of the driveway from about 8% coming down to about 4.5%, I think, going down and connecting into the, sort of the back access drive. It provides for more efficiency. We pick up a few parking spaces by doing that. And there's greater connectivity with sidewalks coming in off of Porter Street. Next slide, please. So, all in all, through this, we've tried to maintain the parking that's there. It's obviously important, and we've, by some tricks that have been learned over the years and by just efficiency and how we do things, we've, we've gone from about 38 spaces to about 48 to 49. We're evaluating one space backed by the big elm tree in the back as to whether we can accomplish that or not. But all in all, we're, we're gaining spaces. We're going from two to four spaces out on the street, and we're, we're picking up the rest within the site. And we're actually eliminating a few spaces that are just only for the faint of, you know, the faint of heart, that, parallel parking on a curve kind of a situation, so.
Are you counting the parking spaces on the street in your count?
For that, 38 and 48 to 49, we are, yes. If you take those away, it would be like 36 and 44 to 45.
The reason why I ask that, because the, those spaces could be used either for Town Hall or the, or the post office.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think on our, on our drawings that we submitted, I don't think we were, because they're not part of the site proper.
That's what I'm saying, it's not part of the property.
But they are, we are adding two on-street parking spaces in addition to this. So we're showing the overall parking improvement of the site and the adjacent on-street parking. So this is adding two spaces that don't currently exist. That benefits the, it benefits Town Hall and the post office.
Right.
And just, and citizens in general.
But there should be an asterisk there noting that, that it's really not part of the.
Yeah, they're listed separately as on-street parking.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And that was part of the efficiency of closing the second exit, is that it allowed those two additional spaces.
Okay.
Next slide, please. So probable estimate on this is about $1.2 million. As I think was mentioned, well, we, CPA funds have, make up about $100,000 plus of this. And we got a, the town received a $250,000 grant from the Shared Streets and Spaces Program, which is terrific. And that was largely because of the pocket park kind of concept. Final. I realize in looking at this again, I think we're trying to be more aggressive. This, I think really, we're trying to get out to bid as August, September. The goal is to get into construction, partly to have this done next year for the, is it ter- tercentennial?
Yeah.
Yeah. But we have accomplished quite a bit from where we started with the CPC application. We got approval, we got through Town Meeting, we got the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. So, so we're, we're getting to the point where we're gearing up to go to bid. Once we, we kind of clear this, this is sort of the final permit approval, so. And that's, I'll stop there for QA. I've got the drawings in here, but as I say, they're probably a little hard to read at this scale.
Well, they also have drawings. So, can I, Mr. Chairman, one of the things, so, we do have an aggressive construction schedule. So it's presenting, you know, the drawings are probably well over 25% now that we're submitting. Well, we have, there's other detailed drawings that we did not include in the packet.
Okay, because I thought you were going through this, so it wasn't a 25%.
Yeah, there's other detailed drawings that weren't included in the packet, because we were just looking at the landscaping and kind of the site layout and the grading. You know, we want to get direction as, does the board like what we're doing? And then, you know, we will continue this. And as we're finalizing these drawings towards the bidding, we'll also bring them for, on the 21st, for, you know, ultimate, hopefully, approval.
I've just got a couple of comments and I can go from there. Your pavement, you keep on talking about, you know, pavement issues where the colored areas are going to be. I want to just make sure that that ends up being concrete or brick. I don't want to get into a situation where we're stamping asphalt on our main entranceways into our, into our, you know, area. So how that's going to get played out or whatever, I'm just reiterating. The other thing that I want to state, and it comes down to the couple of walls you've got coming in front, the retaining wall you're going to be building along the side. We've got to do something with facing those walls, with either, it's going to be an architectural finished forms or it's going to be the brick that we're using in the building. We have an example right now on Central Street, the school that was done. We redid this whole nice area, put stone walls there, and then on the handicap ramp, they left raw concrete. I mean, couldn't even clean up the edges, the formwork. It looks like hell. I'm like, it's like they stuck this thing in the middle of a nice stone wall and then just stuck it there. And when I look at the front of the building, we, now the handicap ramp is a nice brick ramp. And then all of a sudden, we're going to put concrete. And if we even put the same thing there, we're just repeating the same mistakes over and over. And I just think that's going to look awful if we try to do that. So with the finishes, I think along those retaining walls, the walls out front, how they're going to look is going to be important to what, how this whole project comes out.
Totally agreed. And what we've discussed is the, to get the, to consolidate the exits, there is an existing stone wall there.
Mm-hmm. But that's going to be coming out.
That's going to come out. What we're, what we're looking at is whether we can reuse some of those walls. And I have some conversations to have with you guys. But whether we can reuse that stone or whether we'll have to use another face stone, but the intent is to sort of replicate the look of that or similar to it.
Yeah, and we had some detailed conversations, Craig, during our design thing. And GPI has a project, and they actually pulled up the photos in Acton where they did these concrete walls. And then they put the, it's almost a granite veneer. So whatever we decide, we will have the color palette.
But there's a lot of things that can make it look nicer than what Central Street looks like right now.
Yeah.
It is not our intent to have basic concrete walls.
If I have to see that in the front of the Town Hall, I will be rejecting the project all over. I don't care who puts money on it, it just, it looks awful, so.
And we are adding in, at the handicap ramp, there's some damage to the brickwork. And we're going to try to repair that as well with a, you know, the same face brick that is used there, so.
Are you trying to keep the handicap ramp that's there and just repair it, or are you replacing it?
No, we're definitely leaving it in place. That, that all works well. It's just, this was, this was the brick right out front. And it's a little bit because of the parking, kind of comes right up to it, that bumpers have hit it and damaged some of the bricks. So that'll, it's only the face brick that's damaged, that'll get fixed.
Right, because it looks like it opened up and water just runs down it, salt and everything else.
Yeah, so the intent is to fix that damage, but maintain the ramp itself.
Now, during construction, you have to maintain that ramp?
I would think we will, yes.
Yeah.
That will be one of the stipulations on the contractors, the kind of, you know, each week update us as to how they're maintaining access to the building.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, the building has to stay accessible, and there will be a plan. And we've had discussions that, that the employee parking in the back during construction will not be employee parking. That will be public parking, and there, and the accessible way can come through the gate, the door that we now have with the fobs on it.
Yeah, that's right.
And so that has been discussed as a way, when they're, when the front is torn up, the rear is, because it's, you know, the rear parking, which is employee, would become temporary public parking. And we would provide the access straight in to the building.
Okay. Question?
Go ahead, I was going to say, anybody else?
Question right here. Two things. I noticed on your schedule, start construction was March of '26. And in a presentation by, I believe, Mark Tisdale, he'd indicated that construction would not start until after the 300th anniversary parade, I believe, in, in the middle of the summer. So what, what is the actual start date?
Mr. Terry, actually, the schedule that was on this presentation is incorrect.
Okay.
They're planning, you know, in talking with Craig and Mark and Eric, we're planning on working, finalizing these plans, moving towards bid documents, planning board approval in August. After, shortly after that, bidding it, doing construction, and having Town Hall, and having this done prior to the 300 parade and the 300. That is, that right now is the, that is the goal and the direction that we will be going. But I know that Mr. Tisdale has been like, if we don't, can't do that, then we will, you know, it's, you know, it will not be under construction, you know, during that.
Okay.
But actually, the way it's moving now is if we get to the construction documents and planning board approval on the 21st, we'll, we can send it out to bid during the appeal period. And that's, that's what we plan on doing.
Thank you. One other question. The Town Hall area is used twice a year, Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And four or 500, maybe 600 people gather for that, the ceremonies that we currently have. And the, the sound system is terrible. If any of you have been there, if you're not within 10 feet of the microphone, you don't hear a thing. And I was wondering if this plan incorporates or had considered building in some sort of a sound system that's part of the building, so we can have these get-togethers with good audio.
You're rough.
Oh, he's done.
We haven't incorporated the sound system. We're taking a, we have a consultant helping us with the lighting. So we've, we're putting together a really good lighting plan for around Town Hall with some bollard lights, some uplights, some wall packs, new lights out in the back. So we want the Town Hall to be, you know, well-lit, not overly lit, and all LED. However, we're also adding in some power sources so that you can plug equipment in. So there'll be more accessibility to add some other equipment that, as to temporarily be in place for events like that. Thank you.
Yes, Paul?
Yeah.
I asked this question in the Town Meeting, but I want it to be reiterated. The utility pole that's at the corner is being eliminated. And the underground utilities are going from the other side of the street all the way down to the pole that's at the entryway. Is that correct? You're going to keep that utility pole right on the corner?
Yes.
We do not have the budget to put that underground. And some of the issues with undergrounding it is that utility pole and the, but the.
The depictions on the display don't have that pole there. That pole, it irritates me to a great extent that we don't have underground utilities in the town of Stoughton. And that's, this is a project that's very big, and to keep that ugly pole right in the middle, you know, that's my opinion.
Are you talking about the? Paul, are you talking about the temporary pole that's strapped? That one that's still hanging there?
I mean, that's probably what, yeah, budgeted in $100,000 to be able to run that underground or their vote?
Well, yeah, we'd probably be looking to not just do that one pole. You can't just, we'd have to take the whole series of them underground in the area.
Or put a trad Francis.
Hundreds of thousands to, yeah.
And the other thing with undergrounding is then you have to, then we have to accept the liability and putting in new services to any of the buildings that, all right. That, it's.
Can we get a nicer pole there or maybe move it down a little bit instead of right on the corner?
It would be nice to have a new pole there, I agree with that. Like I said, it's sistered with another one and.
Move it down a little bit instead of right on the corner? I don't know. I mean, see what the utility company will do.
We can explore that, Paul.
Thank you.
Paul? I'm glad to see they want, the Town Meeting went for the alternate. So this, this is the best plan of the two as far as I'm concerned.
Paul's actually okay for spending money. That's good.
Might as well. Good for you. I get a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
All right, one of the things that I'm looking at is, number one, handicap parking for employees. I see in the front of the building, you have two spots. Currently, we have two spots there now, not at that location, but you shifted them over to the left.
Yes.
All right, and what happens is the, personally, I'd like to see three spots at least rather than two. And then out back, you have one spot for employee.
Yep, currently, there's an employee or not, it's not an employee. You can, anybody can park in a, anybody can park in a handicap space. And the current handicap space is, as you have gone out there, it's literally in the middle of the driveway. So we're moving it and creating a proper accessible space and route.
What I'm getting at is, I said the employee, but that, when I'm back is the employee entrance. Right, but there, again, especially if you're going to be doing, I mean, to increase that to two handicaps out back, because I don't know how many employees in this building. But, you know, I'm sure there's more than one handicap person that works here, so.
Well, that could potentially be 10, it's just a matter, I understand there's more than one.
Right. But I don't think you have enough handicap parking is what I'm getting at.
I understand. I, I think the challenge is, you know, given the constraints of the site, we've matched the number that is required by code. I think if you, you know, if there's a strong feeling that additional spaces are needed, that we do lose then, like to provide one more, we would almost lose two spaces because of the aisles. You know, generally, we can pair two spaces. So we would have to look at that as to what the impact of it is. It's doable, but.
Right, like I said, up the front of the building, it wouldn't, wouldn't change your drawing that much to add one more spot.
But he's saying you'd lose two spaces.
By adding one more space, by adding two spaces, you lose two additional spaces. And one of the objectives, unfortunately, one of the objectives in the way that we sold this to Town Meeting is increasing the parking. So we exceed the handicap requirement for this building.
Okay, I just want to bring it to the forefront. The sign that's going to be out front, who's going to control that? As far as what goes, you know, that electronic sign?
Most likely, it would probably be the IT, because I know Trish in IT, she does the signage downstairs. And it's, would be wired through there. But my guess is, is the one who, you know, the IT director is the one that deals with the information signs, the digital signs in Town Hall.
Right, they have one down at the DPW.
DPW manages that, and the Water Department manages theirs.
Yeah, okay. Is there any thought put into doing? Is there any thought put into doing charging stations? And I'm not saying put a charging station in, but if you had to put some type of conduit, so at a later date, if you did have to add it?
You can answer that? All right.
We actually had, I've had conversations without Ron on this. We did talk about charging stations initially in this project, and they're logistically What has been decided is, is that we need to, instead of just throwing a charging station in, I know in Taunton, I put in grants for three charging stations, and we turned out we could only put in one, because we didn't even have the electrical infrastructure to. We didn't do that with NSAR to look at, or the National Grid. What is, you know, looking at in the discussions that we've had with Mark is, there'll be, with any police station-
He's spending $2 million to redo the front of the town hall? Stop.
With, what we're looking at for charging stations is take a more comprehensive look. We would look at when the police station would be done, there would be a new public parking lot, much larger, to accommodate, you know, more cars and to accommodate, potentially accommodate charging there. And we wanna look at where we have spaces and extra spaces, and possibly at the, at the rec center. So instead of just putting one down, we're gonna take a comprehensive look at our public facilities within the downtown and figure out the best place, and then, and work with the electric company to see where we have the power to do it.
Okay.
So it, it's not that we're not doing it, it's just, we have, we feel that we need to take a more comprehensive approach.
Like I said, it's a matter of if you're digging up all this asphalt around.
But we're not digging up the back.
You have benches in the front of the building, and you have parking spots right there. Should there be ballards, ballards there to protect the benches that are there, so if someone should step on the gas instead of the brake?
We do have a six-inch vertical curb there where the benches are.
All right, so there's something-
There is, there is a, yeah.
Because that's not handicapped, you can have a curbing there.
Correct. That's, one of the reasons we moved the handicap was partly because of the way the grades and the existing stairs work. It worked better to kind of put them directly in front of the ramp, but it also gave us the curb as sort of a barrier to the building.
No, I agree with you. Now, now that I'm looking at it, you can put curbing in there to prevent that, as opposed to on the left side, we have the handicap, there's the ramp there, they're gonna go into the ramp.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
We can supplement those spaces with wheel stops if we feel like it's necessary, the handicap spaces.
They'll love you a plowing time.
I have a lot of friends in the plowing community.
The, I didn't see the dumpster outlined on the plan.
It is located down back in the corner.
Location, right?
What's that?
Gonna be in the same location?
It's, well, it's-
It's going to be put back where it used to be, right in the back corner by the elm tree.
Yeah.
And we are proposing, because I've been part of this design, we're proposing a, a block wall with a brick veneer.
Nice. Now, is that just one, is that one dumpster or one for, trash, one for?
It's, it's gonna be a little bit larger. We do not use a dumpster for recycling. We use recycling bins that our town picks up. So it will be able to accommodate the recycling bins that are used and the dumpster. So we're gonna do it appropriately sized. One of the things that I wanted to talk about that Ron didn't talk about is, when we started this project and talking about the pocket parks and looking at a CPC application, if you, I wrote the CPC application, if you read it, we passed the Stoughton Center District zoning that has requirements for different people to do these public amenities, seating, little pocket parks and these sorts of things. Early on, the discussion was that we are going to spend the resources, you know, design it and ask for the appropriate funds to meet our code requirement and what, what we envision. So when I have, or the planning board has somebody that's coming into downtown and they need to do the outside amenity, all you have to do is you can say, the town designed theirs, what they wanna look, the quality and the size and the type of design, and tell them, just look right outside our door, because we designed it first. And that was the overarching, and Ron knows, I've preached this for over a year now. That was one of the overriding things with these pocket parks, and especially the front one. The front one is the centerpiece that sets the tone and the design for redevelopment about what we wanna see in the Stoughton Center with the Stoughton Center District design.
Okay. Last and final question. I see that on the backside, actually, it's, yeah, the backside of the building, you have a cutout for the property that's on Porter Street that the town did not buy. Is that with hopes that maybe at some point it will become available?
They actually have access today to that location. We're not going to impede that access point.
Can I take that away?
Okay, so-
That access is required.
There's an existing driveway there onto our property.
So they have an easement?
It, prescriptive.
Okay. Answer my question.
All right. What about bike racks?
Bike racks are, one bike rack's in the front.
Up by the flagpole.
Up by the flagpole.
Up by the flagpole, yeah. Okay. I'm sorry. All right. Anybody else on the board have any questions? Anybody else in the audience have any questions?
Go, come on up, sir.
My name is Jose DeCosta, 22 Pearl Street, your neighbor next door. I've been living here for 20 years, but my family has owned it for 40 years. We talked earlier in the afternoon, and we addressed some issues that I was concerned about. I do wanna make sure that when we put up a fence back in 1981, we moved the fence back a foot and a half. And I wanna make sure that the town is surveyed and make sure that they're building their sidewalk that's on, next to that green car on the bottom left. Just wanna make sure that the property line is surveyed properly. Number two, where their, their sidewalk's being built, it looks like you guys are planning on doing some grass there, and it's only like six inches, because it's colored green. What's, what's gonna be there next to that sidewalk, all the way along the property fence? I'm asking the town.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, I would say, oh, sorry, I turned it up. Yeah, that could be a number of things. It could be ground cover. I, I think we use green as sort of, you know, ground plain, it's not pavement. But as we, as we go through this, and, you know, we can evaluate whether that wants to be grass. Oops. We do have, we do have grass in other places. So one of the things we always look at is, is somebody coming out to mow the grass now? If it were the only place we would be proposing grass, I'd say we wouldn't do it. But, but we can evaluate whether it wants to be grass or a ground cover or daylilies or something like that.
All right. Because currently, at the moment, for the last 20 years, there's been no landscaping done there.
Right.
Since I've been there.
Right.
And maybe an additional 20 years, my family has owned it. But for the last 20 years, I've gone out there every summer, I tilted, I pricked the weeds, I picked up the trash. And the DPW does not maintain anything along that whole fence. I wanna make sure that the DPW at least will address the issues of picking up cigarette butts, papers, and trash, especially since we're adding a sidewalk up along the property line and a tree.
One of the benefits of grass is it's, it's one of the easiest things to maintain. So that's, it's almost guaranteed, if it goes in as grass, it's gonna get mown on almost a weekly basis, and, and any kind of trash would be picked up. So we're trying to keep it relatively low maintenance, but add in the, you know, shade trees and important spots, we're trying to do a little bit more with color and stuff.
All right, because as currently stands, the DPW does come out every Friday.
Yep.
7:00 AM before the town starts to work.
Yep.
And they only maintain in front of the town hall and along Porter. They do nothing. Occasionally, they only weed whack once a year, if that. But the person doing the maintenance is myself, and I've been doing it free of charge for the town. Going along the property line, you, I see next to the blue car and the green, red car, it looks like, what is that, three trees that are planned to be there?
Yes.
Okay. That's nothing but sand and dirt. Are you guys gonna put in new dirt, sod, fertile dirt, so those trees can thrive? Because if not, they're gonna be dead in three or four years, as the previous ones have been there before, they've died. Only because the town also plows the snow down the street and into the corner where the dumpster's proposed to stay. And along when plowing, when the dirt has salt and sand, and anything that's planted there will die eventually. So that may be something, something else we'll have to be, come up with to address that issue. And also maintenance on a weekly basis. As you, if you go out there tonight, gentlemen, you'll see there's nothing but papers out there tonight, and that's less than three days. I just cleaned it on Sunday, and out there, it's just nothing but papers. That's a catch-all for all the trash that blows across the parking lot. Aside from that, I just wanted to bring that up so the town can address these issues and also keep this town looking beautiful. As I try to do it myself, but I'm not gonna do it for free forever. The other issue I wanted to address was what the gentleman brought up. Every year, we have a terrible PA system. I know there's money involved there, but if we could add at least an electrical outlet or something a little bit more powerful, at least it would give the gentleman from the VA a chance to plug in a better speaker electrically rather than a battery-operated PA, which is a terrible way. No one hears you guys.
One, we met with the lighting consultant, and one of our things was looking at providing power. We're looking at providing additional power on the backside, where, if you see my cursor, on the backside here and over here on the backside, and also, we will have power over here.
Wherever the gentleman's gonna be speaking.
So-
Especially with the 300th coming up.
Yeah.
There is an electrical outlet currently right now where the light for the flagpole is, but I'm not sure if he is even aware of it.
Yeah.
And, or if it's powerful enough to plug in a 100-watt PA system there for the town to enjoy.
And we'll have power, we'll have power over by the, the bell.
Bell.
Okay. Because we have a lighting there, we can have an outlet there, too.
I think that would be nice for the town. At least the VA people would be able to plug in something.
That, that was at our request when we met with the lighting consultant last week.
All right. The dumpster, is it gonna remain the same size, only about, what, eight to 10 feet wide? And how tall is gonna be the wall? Is it just above the dumpster size?
The wall will be designed to be, it's the same dumpster. It will, the wall will be designed to be above the height of the dumpster.
The height of the dumpster, okay. But it's not gonna be 20 feet tall?
No.
Trusive.
No. The higher it goes-
I still like to look at town hall.
The higher it goes, the more expensive it is. So we, we want it just high enough to conceal the dumpster.
All right. Next issue. Is there any way that we can address, obviously, the utility pole is ugly. I see it every day. Right now, there's a piece of metal tied to the top there, just holding, waiting to fall over.
Two of them.
Yeah, yeah. I understand that it's expensive to do, but when we add the power stations in the future for EV charging, maybe we can add that to the budget and hide that pole and put everything on the, on the ground. What else? I think that's it. I'll bring in any issues in the future.
Sir, thank you very much, and we appreciate all the effort you're putting into keeping that area clean, and we understand that the town should be doing that. I'm not sure if you've spoken to the DPW, but maybe you should write a letter or talk to somebody over there, maybe explain to them it's not private property, that's, you know, the public property and they should be cleaned. So that's all.
Well, I clean it, because I want it to look clean on the other side, just as I maintain my property for you guys to look at. I would like to reciprocate.
No, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You have a very nice home there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody online that would like to speak about this project? Just Karen. Hi, Karen. We'll, go ahead, if you want to begin.
I'm sorry, I have one more issue. The lighting, a few years ago, the town updated the lighting on the streets and some on the town hall. The new LEDs were incredibly powerful. It took me two months to talk to the DPW to change the LED power to something lower, and also to have added shields to at least the two town hall poles, so it points some more down. When the lighting is addressed at the town hall, mainly on my side of the property, I would like to make sure that my property is not lit up like a football field, as it has been in the past.
You know what else now? They have amber LEDs that are much more attractive to, and they actually have like an older colonial tone to them, too.
Yeah, the only lighting on your side that we're considering is a scotch light at the back entrance here that we do not have.
What's the description of a scotch light? It's a yellow-
It's a downlight.
It's a downlight?
A downlight to light the, to light the pad and the, and the steps.
All right.
That's mounted on the building.
It's mounted on the building.
Not on a pole on your side.
No pole lights.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, Bill, are they gonna have, are they gonna have lighting out back during the construction? Because if that's gonna be the entrance in and out, again, right now, it's poorly lit. Even temporary lighting.
Yeah. I mean, the goal is to have the building accessible throughout construction, so if there are issues like that, we'll, we'll have to address them.
Okay.
One more. Sorry, issues keep popping up, I keep forgetting. On the sidewalk that's being proposed to be there, when there's traffic between 3:00 and 6:00, traffic backs up all the way to School Street. Some people have taken the liberty to cut through town hall and at a little bit of excessive speed. And my concern's always been a kid coming on a bicycle through the back of town hall, not expecting a vehicle taking a shortcut to avoid this light that takes five to seven minutes to get through. We have seen, not only on the weekdays, but also on the weekends, vehicles who will not wait three or four minutes for the light to turn green, and they figured out if they cut through the side of the town hall, or even the front, they'll end up cutting through the town hall and then joining Porter and taking their route. I've done that myself. But I've seen more and more cars starting to do that. Is there something in the plans to add a speed bump or maybe a chain on the weekends to prevent vehicles from cutting or using the town hall parking lot as a speed through or shortcut to prevent, to avoid the light that takes three minutes on average between 3:00 and 6:00 weekdays?
Yeah, I don't think we're looking to chain off the property. However, the drive aisle, as you approach the flagpole area, is sort of, is raised up there. Yeah, so in effect, will be like a speed bump. It's like a speed table.
A speed table. Yeah. I don't wanna make it hard for the people who, who are on wheelchairs either.
Yeah, well, that, it's actually raised up a little bit so that it provides that level course as you come across from-
Okay.
-the intersection and towards the flagpole.
Well, with the new town hall cameras, you'll probably be seeing those vehicles cutting through more often. Maybe you can take a survey and decide to do something about it. Thank you.
Maybe we can, we'll get that, get that light recessed for some, all the timing on it, I don't know.
We actually have GPI looking at optimization for the, the signals all throughout the square.
Okay. So maybe that'll help. If they change the lighting pattern, might help a little bit on that area.
They're contracted to do that right now. We're waiting until school gets back in session so that they can see that it's worse case scenario.
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. I'm assuming you guys are gonna ask for a continue- I'm assuming you guys are going to ask for a continuance?
Yes.
Yes, to August 21st.
Can we accept their continuance August 21st?
No way.
That's what I thought.
Then, oh, I do have a set of conditions here. Why don't you...
Yeah, we ain't voting on those either. We'll vote, but you're not going to let the vote.
Motion to continue to the 21st of August.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you again. All right, moving on, we got general business, we got the meeting minutes from June 26, 2025. I've reviewed these... I've read them, I have no comments. I didn't have any comments when I saw them.
Nope, me either.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of June 26, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Other business. Bill, we had spoken a couple of weeks ago, and the project is still going on, and I just want to see where you are in putting together that tree account before the opening of what's going on down at the Business Park when these, these buildings come online.
I have not gotten to that yet. However, we did meet with Stoughton Logistics, and I do know that when they get their, this is their occupancy permit, their first one is looking at approximately, is it November, Craig? Yeah, they're, they're getting, they're getting these shell permits, which are not considered occupancy permits. So I realize I have till November to look at getting that, and that's been on my agenda.
Right, but we, you and I had spoken, and then we even wanted to set up, we didn't know whether that had to go to Town Meeting to serve as separate account, or it has to go before the Board of Selectmen, so...
It does, I believe it, it's a, it's a gift account that just needs to go before Board of Selectmen.
Okay, but I still want to get on their agenda to be able to get that before November.
Yeah, well, I have to finish writing the program.
I know. I'm just fine, keep on asking the question.
Thank you.
If I don't keep on asking the question, it's never going to happen.
Correct. Yes, it will. I have, I, I know when they, their occupancies, planning on their occupancy.
Okay. And seeing that you brought up that issue, I see that they've, on Turnpike Street...
I didn't bring up any issue, Mr. Murphy.
Well, seeing that the issue has been, come to the surface with logistic pocket and permitting to, on Turnpike Street, I see they paved one entrance into there, and they're supposed to have two. And I see they're already using that first entrance.
Yes. They've paved the, the primary entrance, they have not paved the emergency bypass road, and they're at binder course level, so there's a big lip as you get, as you come off that pavement and onto Turnpike Street.
Right, but what that was supposed to be, that entrance was only supposed to be for, quote unquote, employees, not trucks.
Correct.
But they're out doing trucks out of there.
They shouldn't be using, even their construction trucks in and out of that location.
Yeah, their construction, the small vans and whatnot, they can use it, but their, their big trucks and stump trucks were supposed to use the... We can talk to them.
We'll check in with them on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn.
One question, if you could, we do have our work session on the 18th, and I'm gathering the agenda.
The 18th or 14th?
No, I'm sorry, 14th. Whatever that Thursday is, the 14th, yes. It'd be the, the week before the 21st, yes, the 14th. It will be in the Utenus Room, right over here, and if you have any agenda items you would like, please email them to me. I'm just going to have a rough agenda put together.
And that's at 6:30, correct?
6:30.
Okay.
Of August.
August, yeah.
Okay. So can we have a second on...
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.